We'll call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening and welcome, everyone. Tom, take the roll call, please.
Mayor King.
Here.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Present.
Councilmember Baker.
Right here.
Baskin. Fisher.
Here.
Schuster.
Present.
Ellie.
Present.
Postma.
Present.
Of course, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number one is a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. The motion carries. Item number two is a motion approving our minutes from our April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. The motion carries. Item number three, under recognitions and awards, we have Buddy Poppy Day proclamation. I'll read the proclamation. Whereas, the annual distribution of Buddy Poppies by the veterans of foreign wars of the United States has been officially recognized and endorsed by governmental leaders since nineteen twenty-two, and whereas VFW Papi Buddy Poppies are assembled by disabled veterans and the proceeds of this worthy fundraising campaign are used exclusively for the benefit of disabled needy veterans and the widows and orphans of deceased veterans. And whereas, the basic purpose of the annual distribution of Buddy Poppies by the veterans of foreign wars is eloquently reflected in the desire to honor the dead by helping the living. Now therefore, I, Stephen M. King, Mayor of the City of Austin, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim May twenty-fourth and May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, as Buddy Poppy Days. And I urge all patriotic citizens to wear Buddy Poppy as mute evidence of our gratitude to the men and women of this country who have risked their lives in defense of the freedoms which we continue to enjoy as American citizens. Thank you. Item number four is a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. The motion carries. Under public hearings, item number five is a resolution reviewing a tax abatement application by Jeffrey and Nan Hanegra- Hanegraff, looking for approval or denial of the abatement. Craig.
Thank you, Mayor members. This is at two thousand nine thirteenth Avenue Northeast and the Nature's Ridge subdivision, estimated value of three hundred thousand. The application is in conformance with our adopted policy, and this is a public hearing.
Is there anyone here in the public which should speak on this matter? Counsel, do you have any questions on item number five?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Tom.
Councilmember Baker.
Yep.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Ellie.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number six, resolution reviewing a tax abatement application from Greg and Courtney Hackensmith, Pine Wood Builders LLC, looking for approval or denial of the abatement. Craig.
Thank you, Mayor members. This is along Thirty-second Avenue Northeast, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar estimated value on an open lot. This is in adoption or in conformance with our policy, and this is a public hearing.
Anybody with the public in the audience looking to speak on this matter? No. Counsel, looking for resolution?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Tom.
Councilmember Baker.
Yep.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Ellie.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number seven is a resolution reviewing a tax abatement application from David Anderson. Craig.
This is at the corner of Twenty-seventh Street Southwest and Ninth Avenue Southwest, estimated value of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's in conformance with our policy, and this is a public hearing.
Anybody in the public here wish to speak on this matter? Hearing none. Counsel, any questions? Otherwise looking for resolution?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Tom.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Ellie.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. The last item under public hearing is a resolution for item number eight, reviewing a tax abatement application from David Hillier, Turtle Creek Construction, looking for approval or denial of the abatement. Craig.
Thank you, Mayor members. This is a duplex estimated at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars aside. This is at Fifteenth Avenue Southwest in the Meadow subdivision. It's in conformance with our adopted policy, and this is a public hearing.
Anyone in the audience looking to speak on this matter? Counsel, any questions?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thomas.
Councilmember Baker.
Yep.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Ellie.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Next, I'm under bid opening and award. Item number nine is a resolution receiving bids for airport fuel system replacement. Stephen.
Yes, this is a project that's been on our five-year CIP for probably ten years. Been looking at replacing our fueling system at the airport. And before you tonight are the results from three bidders that bid on this project. We bid some alternates as part of the project as well. Not knowing where the costs were going to fall exactly and where things would be with our overall budget, we wanted to have some flexibility with that. But the bids came in lower than anticipated. Our low base bid, our low total bidder was Minnesota Petroleum Services at seven hundred forty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars and ten cents. The base bid portion of that included two ten-thousand-gallon above-ground tanks, piping and concrete. Alternate number one, which is included in that amount, is automatic tank gauge control software and probes. And alternate number two, again included in that total base bid, is cleaning and removal of the existing storage tanks. This project is funded with thirty percent local dollars and seventy percent state grant, and we would recommend awarding the total base bid to Minnesota Petroleum Services.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Lang. Counsel, any questions for Stephen?
Stephen, only question for you. It looks like we're building, the new ones are above-ground and the previous ones were below-ground. What went into that? Was it cost or environment or what was the driver of the above-ground?
The new, generally new construction of tanks are above-ground for our use. We've put in above-ground tanks at our central garage facility, a ten-thousand-gallon tank. Reasons for that is the material that was used for above-ground tanks is more readily available, so hopefully less delays with the project like this. And it's also easier for us to monitor issues. When it's buried below-ground, you can't see what's going on. You have to trust that monitoring equipment, but now we'll have visual aids to be able to monitor any leaking or anything that may be going on, hopefully years into the future.
Any concern about like long-term wear and tear in terms of like rust and winters and stuff like that, or is it pretty immaterial?
I would say we could have the same sort of issues with ground materials corroding or eating away at the tanks. So I think it's a neutral concern whether in-ground or above-ground, we could still have that same issue. But again, this will give us the opportunity to visually inspect them, address needs as they come about, instead of getting up too late when they're when they're below-ground.
Okay. Thank you. Looking for a resolution for item number nine.
So moved.
Second.
Tom.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Ellie.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Under petitions and requests, item number ten is a resolution for approval of Austin Associates Organization AAO memorandum of agreement for the take-home vehicles. Craig.
Thank you, Mayor members. Included in the packet under exhibit one is an MOA with AAO. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Counsel action is requested.
Counsel, any questions for Craig?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Tom.
Councilmember Baker.
You bet.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Ellie.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number eleven is a resolution approving an off-sale liquor license transfer to Everest Apollo Gas and Liquor LLC, doing business as Apollo Liquor. Tom.
As noted in the memo from City Clerk Kriyan Wolf, she's requesting counsel authorize or approve the transfer from to Everest Apollo Gas and Liquor, doing business as Apollo Liquor. I believe there is a sale involved.
Counsel, any questions? Otherwise looking for resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second? Tom.
Councilmember Baker.
Yep.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Ellie.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number twelve is a resolution approving an off-sale or off-site gambling license for American Legion Post ninety-one at the Austin or Moore County Fair. Tom.
The American Legion will be doing the annual bingo at the fairgrounds and have requested our approval, as required by the state, for an off-site gambling license for the fair from August sixth of twenty twenty-four through August eleventh. We request counsel approval of such.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions? Otherwise looking for resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Tom.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Ellie.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number thirteen is a resolution affirming participation in the Office of the State Auditor's Voluntary Twenty Twenty-four Performance Measurements Program. Thomas.
Minnesota Statute six point nine one was created several years ago to allow entities to get access to additional state aid if they would do a survey, perform a survey of up to eight to ten questions to their residents to gauge their approval of city services, city facilities, et cetera. Last couple, last several years we've done this. It adds additional forty-five hundred dollars in additional LGA to our budget. We usually only get about two hundred to two fifty responses, but it's just a survey we set up on Survey Monkey and counsel had authorized such, it opens us up to an additional forty-five hundred dollars or so of state aid.
Excellent. Thanks, Tom. Any questions, counsel, for Mr. Dankert? Otherwise looking for resolution for item number thirteen.
So moved.
Second.
Tom.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Ellie.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number fourteen is a motion approving the ice removal at Riverside Arena. Jason.
Honorable Mayor and Counsel, at the Monday, April fifteenth, City Council Work Session, staff brought the proposal to remove the ice at Riverside Arena. The request originally came from the Austin Bruins Hockey Team. Staff presented some background information regarding the request. Estimated cost to remove the ice in-house with city staff and equipment is twenty-two thousand, six hundred. The Austin Bruins have offered to contribute twelve thousand dollars towards the ice removal in order to help offset these costs to the city. The Bruins requested that their twelve thousand dollar contribution be split into two payments, six thousand dollars in June, on June first, and six thousand dollars on September first. Funding for the ice removal is not in the current twenty twenty-four budget, which is why staff is bringing this item to council for approval. The Bruins have ordered replacement logos in anticipation of the removal. City staff has also ordered a city logo to put in the ice this year. Proposed timeline, if approved, would begin to remove the ice probably tomorrow, and then pending receiving the logos from the Bruins as well. We've received ours, but I think probably next Wednesday we would start bringing the ice back in. So it really should be back in by June third is our estimation. We have a few rentals coming up, and Austin Youth Hockey has offered to do some camps this year, and they start June eleventh, so we definitely want to have the ice back in by then. So staff's recommendation this evening is accepting the Austin Bruins' contribution of twelve thousand dollars and proceed with the removal of ice at Riverside Arena. If approved, any excess funds would come from contingency, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody asks me.
Excellent. Thanks for your work on this, Jason. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Seahan? If not, looking for a motion on this one.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed.
Nay.
Need a roll call on that, Tommy?
Councilmember at large, Austin, second by Councilmember Paul Fisher to approve of the ice removal, and I vote is in favor of such. Councilmember Baker.
No.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Ellie.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Jeff.
Aye.
Motion passes six one, Your Honor.
Thank you, Thomas. Moving on to item number fifteen is a resolution approving storm sewer inventory project. Stephen.
At the previous work session, Mitch Wenham, Assistant City Engineer, presented a program for inspecting and inventorying our storm sewer system. This program would be similar but different to our current sanitary sewer inspection program that's going on right now. The differences would be that there would be of little to no impact on city homeowners. Our current program has a bit of an impact on homeowners as it relates to smoke testing and some pump inspections. Storm sewer system will not have that. But otherwise, televising, cleaning, inspecting and inventorying the existing storm sewer system would be very similar to the program that we've done with our sanitary over the last six years. The storm sewer program is planned to last four years, breaking up, trying to equally break up the system amongst our community in over into quarters. And we have this budgeted in our stormwater fund for the next four years, so it is part of our five-year CIP. Before you tonight is a proposal for approval from WHKS in the amount of one hundred and forty thousand to kick off the first year of this for your program.
Great. Thank you, Stephen. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Lang? Otherwise looking for resolution approving the storm water.
So moved.
Mayor, I'm sorry.
Sure.
It looks like in the backup material, the estimated fee is one hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay. With that, same motion, our resolution. All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Tom.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Ellie.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number sixteen is a resolution approving an airport teehanger entitlement transfer from the Walker, City of Walker. Stephen.
Yes, we've presented two of these to council previously. These entitlement transfers involve moving funds from a community that doesn't have use for them to our project, our teehanger project. And then future years, we will pay those dollars back after we have our project completed. So before you tonight, there's actually two transfers. This first item is with the City of Walker in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It would be transferred back to Walker. Our funds would be transferred back in twenty twenty-six. And then just quickly adding on to it, item seventeen is a transfer with Wadena, where we would receive one hundred and fifty thousand dollars here in twenty twenty-four for our project, and we would repay it back to them in twenty twenty-seven. So with that, I would recommend approval of both item sixteen and seventeen when you get to that item.
Excellent. All right. We'll take them one at a time. Resolution is for item number seventeen approving the Walker transfer.
So moved.
Second.
Tom.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Ellie.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero.
Thank you. Item number seventeen, same as sixteen, only approving the entitlement transfer from Wadena. So moved.
Second.
Tom.
Councilmember Baker.
Yep.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Ellie.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number eighteen is a resolution approving engineering services for the airport fuel system replacement. Stephen.
So yes, the project that was previously approved tonight for the new fueling system, we have a proposal from S E H to, in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars to oversee the the inspection and construction admin of those tanks. Again, funding for their services would be covered with thirty percent local funds and seventy percent state grant, and we would recommend approving this contract with S E H.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions, Mr. Lang? Looking for resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Thomas.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Ellie.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number nineteen is a resolution accepting the following donations for the City of Austin. A five-hundred-dollar gift from Stephen Nieswanger for the twenty twenty-four flower program. Hundred dollars from Michael and Susan Gregg for the flowers. Fifty dollars from Bruce and Roberta Burnt for also for the flowers, and a thousand dollars from Morning Lions Club for Lions Park, with those looking for, accept those donations.
So moved.
Second.
Tom.
Councilmember Baker.
You bet.
Baskin.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Schuster.
Aye.
Ellie.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Great. Thank you, Tom. Moving on to citizens addressing the councils. Any citizens in the audience wishing to speak to council of items that were on the agenda? Hearing none. Honorary council member, Miguel.
Comments, Your Honor? Everything's fine.
All right. Thank you. Looking bright down there. Thanks for the brightness in the shirt. Reports and recommendations. Craig.
I have nothing.
Counsel, we'll start with Laura.
I wanted to just remind the public that the City of Austin does not recognize no-mow May. We do want to support our pollinators, but as with many things in nature, it seems that a simple rule of thumb, like don't mow your lawn during the month of May, doesn't really have the benefits, and it does have some downside of some overgrown lawns, so just to let people know, we're not honoring that. Fourth Avenue Fest is coming on Wednesday, June fifth. There will be free swim at the pool. There will be live music. There will be art-making activities. It's a great kickoff to summer. The Parks Recreation and Forestry Department is working with our local pickleball community and hoping that we may be able to convert some tennis courts to pickleball, existing tennis courts as early as this summer. But of course, I didn't promise anything, pickleball people. We're working on it. I heard from Randy Hoffner at Parks and Recreation that the Tree Crew is doing really excellent work, and boy, they have a lot of it. Taste of Nations is coming up on Saturday, May eighteenth, at Van Shell Park. Great community event. I encourage everybody to go, take your family, and enjoy all of the different cultures in our community. And then finally, today marks fourteen days to filing to run for local office. There will be council seats. The mayor's office is also available, so I encourage people with an interest to apply, to run, to reach out to any of us. We would love to mentor you, help you, walk you through the process, tell you what it's really like. And particularly, if you don't see your own experience or identity reflected in the leadership, this is a great opportunity to serve the community and bring your voice to the table.
Thank you, Laura. Mike?
A couple things. First of all, I had a chance to listen to Jason and remind me her name.
Jenna.
Jenna, one of our naturalist interns, talking about the EAB situation in town. Excellent presentation. If you have not seen it, there will be more opportunities to. And it really did kind of hit home as I left that meeting and drove past our city crew working on taking down an ash tree down the street that I drove on. Like, it is here, it is now, so I appreciate their very hard work on that. They had a lot of questions from the audience, and they had all the answers, so I was very impressed. It's really great to see so many home tax abatements before the council today. We are always looking for more, so if you've been thinking about building, now is the time. Speaking of which, great job by Riverland on the HRA house that they have partnered to build this year. It's another market-rate, single-family home that should be up for sale very soon, and we're thankful for that partnership. It doesn't get built by itself. It's Riverland students, and they do have spots for next year's carpenter class. So if you are graduating and trying to figure out what you want to do, highly recommend the trades, and Riverland would love to talk to you, right, Miguel? Last, definitely not least, I just wanted to take a moment to recognize a longtime dedicated Austin community member, Joe Furman. Joe's been a longtime board member of the Salvation Army. I also have served with him on the Austin HRA. He's retired from those positions recently, and we're just really grateful for the many, many years of service that he's given to Austin and volunteering. And just want to give our sincere thanks to Joe for all of his work for Austin.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate that. Jeff?
I completed the homework and all the time with the head shrinkers at Soccora. For those of you involved in the selection, you did a great job. I think this is a really, first of all, it's a good experience for anybody to go through. I think it will be especially useful for people that are first-time supervisors. It's, I think these folks do a really nice job. Again, real, I think it's, I just, I think we, we may have had a rough start with the employee survey, but I think we got lucky and we got better. So again, thanks for everybody that was involved in this, and I would encourage you all to invest the time that Soccora is asking us all to this month and early next month. That's it.
Absolutely. Thanks, Jeff. Nothing, Your Honor. Jason.
Three really quick things. So one, from a port authority standpoint, we continue to urge the passage of a bonding bill to include support for the Hormel Institute expansion. So it was good to have the governor here a couple of weeks ago, and hoping that he can help push that across the finish line. Two is, as we continue to tell our story about all the wonderful work that we're doing in Austin, actually have an opportunity next week out in Colorado to talk about the work that we're doing as a welcoming community and kind of the model that we've built. And so I'll be presenting alongside a council member from New York City and a couple other folks around the country. So we should be really proud of the company that we're in. And third and finally, go Timberwolves.
Excellent. Thank you, Jason. Appreciate that. Paul?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Joyce?
Nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
I would, you know, Jason spoke to it, that the governor was here for the Hormel Institute Expansion Bonding Project. Basically took a nice tour and a nice community event there, but also that morning we had a bunch of dignitaries down. We had both senators, Globashare and Tina Smith, and Governor Walz spoke at the groundbreaking for the bridges. Mr. Lang assured me that we weren't going to take them all down at once. We're going to do them one at a time, so I appreciate that. I tried to sell him otherwise, but he wasn't buying it. But we had ten people down here, some from the unions and from the DOT. They're paying a lot of attention to Austin, and we certainly appreciate them for their efforts to come for that groundbreaking, but moreover, appreciate all the DOT's efforts that are going to come through Austin in the next couple of years, rehabbing and redoing all of our bridges, so that was quite an impressive day for the City of Austin. I'd also like to recognize Dave McKeecon, who is legitimately, it's his birthday today. I played some games in the past, but our chief, McKeecon, it's his birthday, so happy birthday, David. With that, Brian, you wanted to speak, you wanted to speak on?
Yeah.
Sure. From the Bruins? Sure.
Yeah, so, so sorry, we, we have a bunch of hockey guys over here, too many hits to the head.
Got approved.
Excuse me for me. So yeah, thanks so much for having us. I just wanted to add some context or clarity to our request and the reason behind it, but also just, I'm not sure if everybody just really understands who the Bruins are and what we do here in the community, and I apologize for the Rochester here. I also handled the Grizzlies, and I was in Rochester trying to And I apologize for the Rochester here. I also handled the Grizzlies and I was in Rochester trying to, trying to promote them today. So just for context, I grew up in Austin. I'm a nineteen ninety-one grad here. I love this community. When I got back from Iraq, I moved my, my two kids back, back home. And I've been here ever since and, and to see the town change in those thirty years and then also to see the Bruins now the past fourteen, we just finished our fourteenth season here in Austin. Very proud to call Austin our home and we want to be here for generations to come and we truly mean that. So for context, this, this offseason, or excuse me, or later this season here in the spring, we, we had kind of a, a meeting of the minds here in Austin and we looked at the arena and we've been noticing some changes to the quality of the ice surface. Also the boards, we've had some damage identified in the boards on the inside of the boards that could potentially cause player safety and that's what we were really concerned about here. When you get to the level of tier-two junior hockey, you really have to have a quality playing surface and these guys are so big and so strong that any kind of slight damage to the boards could result in injury to them. If you've ever been to a Bruins game, they come crashing pretty hard with those things, a lot, a lot faster and harder than, than the youth teams. But that was our primary concern and we approached, at that point, City Administrator Clark and we made our, our case that, hey, you've got some player safety issues here. You've got some concerns with playing surface. And it's not just us that was making that request. We had talks with high school coaches, youth, youth, the youth hockey board. And we all just generally agreed that the ice surface in Riverside needed replacing. What was troubling for us when we made that request was we, we, we heard that there was no money in the budget and that there had been no plan for that. When we had been told that every fourth season, the ice would be addressed at Riverside. We are going into our fourth offseason here. So to get that ball moving, we tried to work hand-in-hand with Mr. Clark. And then when Jason started, excuse me, Partner Rec Director, Mr. Seehan, started, we really wanted to, to set up a good relationship with those two gentlemen to move forward productively. We had some ideas, we traded some ideas. And to get the ball rolling, we made a good faith offer to, to do that, to help out financially. To be perfectly blunt with you, and this sounds terrible, but we didn't think it was our place to do that. We figured that a basic arena maintenance was the responsibility of the city and after four seasons, that really should have been addressed. But we want to be really good community partners here. We want to be really good partners to the city and I truly mean that. And we're in this long term. We have an owner who is absolutely committed to the community. This year alone, the Austin Bruins gave back sixty thousand dollars to the community through charitable donations through our Austin Bruins Foundation. I would challenge small businesses in the community to make that kind of impact and we're, we're proud to have done that. So we've got an, an owner who is invested in the community, invested in this arena, but we need your help. We need your help with a long-term plan for either Riverside or the future of hockey here in Austin. Our youth programs are really growing here at the, at the base levels. You're going to have a lot of kids come into the program. It's really starting to grow again. And we're proud to have been a part of that over the last fourteen years. But at some point, this group is just going to have to decide, the city's going to have to decide. You've got a fifty-some-year-old arena. What is the future of that? If it's, if it's Riverside Arena, great, it's a beautiful barn. I think we can do a lot of good stuff with Riverside Arena. I think we can make that a really beautiful centerpiece to downtown with the assistance of the city, with the assistance, partnership with the Bruins, other organizations. That could really become a beautiful centerpiece. Everybody we talk to, you know, that comes into our barn says, oh my gosh, look at this thing. It's just gorgeous inside. We want to keep that. We love, we love our, we love our home at Riverside. But long-term, whether that's five, ten, fifteen, whatever years, we need to have some kind of plan in place for the future of hockey in, in Austin. Pack arena is great for what it is served for, a sheet of ice for practicing youth, but it's not the future of Austin hockey here. You've got to, we, we're, we're hoping that collectively we can come up with some kind of solution there for long-term hockey. Again, proud to be here in Austin. We're proud of our home. We're proud to represent the community of Austin. And that's basically all I had. I just wanted to thank you for your time and thanks for the passage. And we're going to keep, keep working with City Administrator Clark and Mr. Seehan to, to make sure that the future of Austin hockey is bright, so thank you.
Very good. Thanks, Brian. We appreciate the partnership the Bruins did bring this year and all the other years. They are great corporate and community partners. So we'll continue that dialogue. I appreciate Jason's perspective and what he brought to those meetings and Craig and whoever else sat on those too. There was some, there was some good discussion. And it was never a, we're, we're not giving anything. It was always, how do we do this together? So I appreciate that all along the way, so thank you. With that, I guess we'll take a motion to adjourn to our May twentieth meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? We are adjourned. We'll take a five-minute break until the work session. Thank you.